All right, so just FYI, we're on Zoom. I don't, I think it likely that we have visitors, but it also gets recorded. So you're, you're at risk of being quoted in the examiner.
I will be quoted.
And be aware of that. So Yemi reached out, obviously, on the occasion of that event, talking about safety concerns at the, at the Grand Street and Pleasant Avenue crossing of the Sawmill. Eric and I, the chief and Anthony Carr, visited last week
In a turn.
Uh, in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And a bunch of other issues came up. Obviously, there are a whole bunch of Sawmill issues, which we are limited in some ways to deal with because it's a state road that's enforced by the county, but managed by the state. But there are also a bunch of issues in your neighborhood.
Yeah.
So why don't you just?
Take it away. So yeah, so I'm Yemi Healy. Nice to meet all you guys. Um, so I figured I would just bring so a little bit about me. So I grew up in Pleasantville. I live over on Pleasant Avenue. Um, eighty-four Pleasant Avenue and um, we've been there about seven years and then we've noticed a lot of different things about the safety in that area. We're real pleasant avenue, I guess during COVID became um, a cut, a cut through because of the construction that was going on and also just all the other things.
People pulling off Pleasantville Road onto Pleasant in order to circumvent the second of the Sawmill that was closed.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, maybe that's always been the case. I think.
I'm sure it was to some degree, but I never heard that it was epidemic.
Yeah, I think that people also, I mean, when I asked some of the older residences on that street, they, most people will go directly to the Sawmill entrance and speak about that point and the light and all the things that have happened over the years. Um, uh, and I think that I said, well, there's two very different, I think that the way we're gonna get anything or speak about anything is really to separate the two, right? Like is, you know, the Sawmill and the light are county-state stuff. And then for all the people that I'm speaking here tonight for, which is about, yeah, I think there were about thirty people, that's twenty-five, yeah.
Turnout.
Yeah, good turnout. And I think that a lot of people, we made it clear that at that meeting, people understood it was separated. I think people still voiced a lot of the, so I basically gave out my information and I said, I'd like to compile the list for you guys of what ideas you have. Um, there was actually this, you guys can pass this around. Um, so this is one of the residences, Sarah and Atlo. So she is actually also from Pleasantville. Um, but she sort of lives up the street and in that area. So I'm focusing basically on these three streets, which is Pleasant, Sorals and Mountain. There's other streets in that area, but I think those are the main commuter ones. I think, um, also the people that live on Grant across, leading up to the Sawmill entrance. So those are the people that have sent stuff in.
On Grant on the downtown side or on your side?
The Jacob Burns Center, like that, that sort of.
Those few houses between the Burns and the.
Yes, yeah, there's, I think there's about six houses. And then there's, and then we have the new units, um, there. What do they call them? I don't know the name of them. Oh, the, the, that's right, the answer. Yeah, beautiful, beautiful building. Uh, people have a lot of different opinions about it, but I, I think it's very pretty.
Yes, yes.
Um, so basically, if, to represent the idea, I really tried to give people that background, right? Like that if we want the village to be involved in this, this is some ideas. Those are, the printout she had given me had some really good, like just visuals. So that's also why I'm bringing that in. But for me, I think all of this sort of started with that accident and, you know, kind of, I, I've heard accidents for seven years now, just kind of, and some people will rush to the Sawmill, actually, which I, I didn't know. And after that meeting on the nineteenth, I realized actually, there's a lot of residents that do, like that live there and then they just kind of go, if it's like the middle of the day. I, I even saw one of our neighbors running down not too long ago. Um, so, so basically, there's been several accidents and there is somebody who um, Tim, uh, Matt, Mattson, so um, his wife Nicole actually just sent over some new information, which I didn't know about. Um, he has a video camera and so has been, I guess, filming all the accidents for the past at least eight months, she said.
They're on the Grand Street, so?
Mm-hmm. And.
The end house or?
Uh, no, right in the middle, sort of a greenhouse. Um, I, I can find out the, the number, but. Um, so I guess the difference is what she's saying is that, which, this is new information to me, so I want to bring it up before I forget, that there's, the accident report lists a certain amount from the county and then the reports from her filming, or from their filming, actually is quite more. So I think that that's an interesting point for a further discussion, but um, anyway, so so what I kind of wanted to say was the things we could do in the village. So I think a lot of people wanted me to bring up the Sawmill. They, there's a sign that fell down. That's like one of the easiest kind of low line fruit that with the, on the north side coming closer, um, that they said, like, could we address that? Um, and I said, I don't think at this meeting, this is gonna be addressed. I was like.
A state sign on the, on the parkway has fallen down?
Yeah, so with the blinking lights as you're approaching.
As you're heading north, that kind of thing?
Yeah.
As you're heading north?
As you're heading south.
Right, so there, I, I looked at it last week.
Yeah.
And it's, there is one, the bottom light is, is covered by bushes, would need to be trimmed out.
And there was a sign in the middle of it.
I see.
That I guess has fallen down.
Okay, so that's a maintenance issue we can, you know.
Yeah, I think the maintenance issue can be done. Uh, you know, the other things that, you know, after this accident, I was gonna go and buy my own reflective paint and just be like, you know, just go and like paint the crosswalk at least.
Bad idea.
You know, I, I, I was like, I was like, what could be done now? You know, I think I went into mom mode and protective mode, but I realized that there's, this is, there's about two hundred and eighteen families, right, on between those three uh, streets. I think that, uh, I know at least thirty, twenty-five or thirty of them have kids that are under the age of seven. So, and there's at least two of them. So that's at least fifty kids that will be walking um, to school someday. Uh, like maybe within the next year or so. So I think that the things we were trying to do, so here's the sort of list that I, I sent to you guys, but and they, they're ranged.
She sent it just, uh, an hour ago. I'll send it to everybody.
Yeah, so they're sort of ranging, right? But I think the biggest thing is, I noticed that the traffic leading up to the Sawmill is where the village could help. So on both sides, um, with signage, with, uh, it could be with paint. I think we were talking about a lot of different, a lot of different ideas there. Just something to get the attention of the drivers. I usually notice that the people that are speeding along Pleasant to make the right turn to get onto the Sawmill, which is a part of the accidents that happen. So as you're getting onto the Sawmill, this is where the immediacy sort of like runs around, they just wanna beat the light, um, is to find a way where there's, a lot of people came back with a stop sign on Pleasant before making the right turn. That was one of the.
Just slow down.
Uh, because I think just pe, definitely to slow down, but there's a lot of pedestrians.
Around that curve.
Yeah.
Trying to get to the Sawmill and beat the light.
Yeah, I think on, but really, most people want stop signs at every stop on Pleasant and Sorals. Like if it was up to setting, people wanted, you know, speed bumps, they wanted uh, things like that, just a way to slow down. Sorals has a huge amount of traffic uh, just going along that way, but Pleasant.
It, it is, is the, I mean, commuters aren't using sorals, are they?
Yeah, they don't.
And then where do they come down?
Cut down my street or they cut down, uh, it should basically, they're, they make their first left to like avoid the traffic. So sometimes it's mountain, but sometimes it's sorals.
They're using mountain as well? I mean, that would be.
People basically come down, is it Pleasantville Road?
Yes.
And then to cut around any sort of traffic, they are using the left to filter into the Sawmill.
Mountain.
They've learned the cut across. And usually, I think that, I mean, I can't speak exactly, Sorals, I have seen firsthand, is very either, there was like slower speed. I think we spoke about speed sign.
So they recently, the state just this, just a few months ago.
Yeah.
Uh, and the governor signed it, allows us to make a community-wide speed limit of twenty-five. Previously, the lowest we were allowed was thirty.
Okay.
And so I think we're almost certainly gonna agree to doing that.
Okay.
It involves changing a lot of signs, but
Right.
it's a new opportunity we have.
Yeah, I definitely think that would help. Um, I think particularly the, to slow down people on that right turn will help the lights. So that's like the, the biggest kind of thing. I think some of the crosswalks definitely need to be repainted. Now, again, that's the state-county, but.
On this, on the Sawmill.
Uh, on the Sawmill, yeah, for sure. But um, that, when you're coming up the crossover the Sawmill and you're coming to Pleasant Avenue, there's this three-way stop. And we have a, a chunk of commuters that use that area. And it's because of the people that are cutting around, it becomes a very dangerous thing. Like we had a lot of, this last year, some of the station was, we had a lot of expecting mothers and they were walking home from work and a lot of them really almost got like taken out because they're just crossing the street. It's just a very quick, people are trying to move quickly. Um, so that's, I think, one of the biggest ones. We're trying to slow down. Sorals as well. Um, I, I think what you mentioned about speed bumps is that there's a, there's a series of processes there and also they can be very loud.
Yeah, so I mean, we've had requests in various places. Uh, as I mentioned, the Fire Department Rescue Squad are a little oppositional about having too many of them.
Yeah.
But added them in the school areas. I will say, in every place we put them, uh, Romer being the exception, some neighbors are like, I don't want that from Night House.
Yeah.
Because you get bump bump and, you know, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
It's certainly worth talking about.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's the solution. I think that was just one of, that was brought up a lot.
Yeah, so let me just say one, one thing for YouTube guys. Um, the, the crossing at Grand Street has been a discussion forever, as you might imagine, doubtless long before any of us were involved. And the State Department of Transportation has an overarching goal of eliminating great crossings wherever they can. And among the risks we confront is uh, highlighting too much of an accident history or too much danger there will cause them to say, we're gonna which they have the independent right to do. And clearly, although there are a few of your neighbors who think that would be a good idea, the majority do not.
Yeah.
So that's just.
What about the red light camera? The, are we now?
So, well, so when we met, we reported that there was this uh, bill that had been passed by both houses and was on the governor's desk. Uh, I was a, uh, we've gotten a little more information today and I was on a county call today. That bill gives the county the potential right to use red light cameras on roads it owns. It does not give them the right to put them on roads. They don't. So whether the state would have the right to do it on their own road is, is the next question to ask. I brought this up in the county call today where George Latimer was mentioning that issue, uh, and so more later. But clearly, that would be a great addition.
What, what about the, I love all these ideas. I mean, you're really thinking creatively.
Oh, yeah, the people got real green, is there some?
That's great. Um, what I don't see is the flashing light within the red light. The strobe, yeah, that they have.
That was, yeah, put on the list. This list that I had also sent you, just so you know, was um, just one in particular. The visuals were really great for us, so I figured I'd, I'd also miss.
So, and, and again, what I said to Yemi and our neighbors, and we will all have to work together on, is to be a little strategic about what we asked the OT for.
Um, yeah.
I, I will say, the history of the Reader's Digest road crossing, uh, and getting that strobe light there, which actually wasn't our issue, was a long and kind of tortured process. The state, uh, highest, I can't speak for them, but I think their attitude is if you start making every crossing into a pants-on-fire kind of a blinking, etchy thing.
Yeah.
There ceases to be a hierarchy of importance. And the trouble of Reader's Digest roaming is that the, it's a, a red light at the end of a long straightaway and all of that. So there might be some flack about that.
And here they might think there had just been a red light already on the Sawmill.
Yeah, who knows how that would play?
But, but so you're saying the concern is both, both drivers on the Sawmill and drivers on the Sawmill, the Pleasant to Grant connection.
Yeah.
Is there any weighting uh, among your community of which is more like worse?
Well, I think that the, the actual light at the Sawmill entrance, uh, you know, has, is where, so even seeing the video footage that, you know, the Matt, Tim Mattson, um, on Grant has, uh, is alarming, actually. Um, you know, it shows just every single accident or infringement. Or, you know, just even there was an accident two weeks after mine. So usually, it seems to involve people either illegally turning right or left from Grant, right? And then people running the red light.
Um, people running the red light on the Sawmill or on the wrong Grant?
On the Sawmill. So it's not usually Pleasantville residents. Like they know very clearly, wait, stop, count all your cars, you know? Um, and I think that that has been like a serious fear that's instilled in most people that have to cross. Um, but I think the things we can kind of control, and this meeting is more what I was highlighting, which is leading up to that light is, uh, like we're trying to slow down traffic.
So if, if, if all of those are the issue, it feels to me, just at first glance, that the four-way red light with, with a time lag for pedestrian crossing is the one that solves the most problems.
And which, thankfully, I think has a sub-zero chance of being accepted by DOT.
Yeah.
Well, but we have it in the whole village. We have it.
If we're talking about at the Sawmill, you mean?
No, I'm saying in the old, we have, I'm just saying we have.
We have, you, you, you're talking about the light on the Sawmill, Grand Street, yeah.
Yeah.
So there is, I, I, having been through this and based on some reason and direction, there is absolutely zero chance sub-zero that the state would permit that. And their reasoning behind it is the longer you leave cars on the Sawmill backed up at a red light at every grid crossing, the worse the traffic beat happens. And the cumulative impact causes more angry, angry drivers, more misbehavior. There was a quite tragic accident there, I want to say, ten years ago, when someone pulled out of Grand Street and turned left into the northbound lane.
Yeah.
Didn't make it around the median. But, and among the things we pressed them about was extending the time period when it's red in all directions, which is just a few seconds at the moment.
Yeah, I think the last two accidents were seven and eight seconds past the red light.
Right, so, so they extended it a little bit, but they will not extend it to what might feel like a significant change.
So that's, I mean, that's, that's a really good, when you said running a red light, I was thinking two seconds or one second. That, I mean, that's.
I mean, some of the other footage.
It's difficult to control. It's so, like, it's so criminal.
It is, which is why that is a red light.
No, even, yeah. Yeah, we're not, we're not like tinkering with.
Although the accident with your car was, was much quicker, right?
Uh, no, I think there was six seconds on the, on the cam, I mean, on the footage. Yeah, and then there was one I just saw actually back in February, which was a pedestrian. Actually, somebody ran the red light and they, and that was horrific footage, but basically, I don't even know that person's alive. But that was.
If someone was struck?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it, I think that the fact. Yeah, I, the fact that there was, there's so much data and video footage around it, I think also just gives a lot of power to if, again, I want to be very sensitive about the state, you know, kind of county stuff. Because I don't, I think the majority of people do not want to close. I think also as far as our home values, that doesn't help. Um, so I think that that would be, I want to go set very cautiously.
And, and I, and I, I really think we need to, because I don't know what step they might take. The other thing they might say is to remove the pedestrian crossing, allow vehicular crossing, but uh, remove the vehicular crossing, close the crosswalk.
Right.
Those are the possibilities that most people don't want as an eventual.
Yeah, and another, another suggestion was to move, if the village has jurisdiction, to move where the cars stop at. Again, that's.
On Grant and?
On, on the Grant side closer to Pleasant. So that was the, so the, so the issues were the stop signs leading up to it, moving the stop signals or traffic lights. When, I know that most of the kids, that when we're trying to cross, it becomes very nerve-wracking to even push the light there because the, the light to push the button to cross is actually further out than the cars. Um, so to even have that barricade, um, further out and we're exposed than the cars are actually.
On the downtown side.
Um, on the Pleasant side.
Right.
Yeah.
Although you have that barricade.
Both actually are.
You know, on the Pleasant side, you have that concrete barrier.
We have a concrete barrier, yes, but we are further out than the, they, we are further out than the actual cars are back. So one, one person really wanted to make a statement that they wanted either the, push the button to be further back. And I said, that's probably state-county stuff, but.
Certainly, the buttons are state. The whole signal is the state.
Yeah.
But they might not be, you know, we just have to think about things that feel like something the state can do before it pushes them into their, I mean, they're also very liability-conscious. Yes, no doubt they need to be. This is the life they lead and, um, so, I mean.
So one other idea was putting.
An email that kind of, you know, you know, was it written by a lawyer or was it written by the DOT guy, right?
Yeah, so the county owns the surrounding land.
The state owns the road. I don't know if the county.
Well, on the tax parcel viewer, I'm just holding up that says Westchester County owns the.
There's some right of way that.
Surrounding land.
Yeah, and the county patrols the Sawmill.
Under a contract to the state.
Right. So I don't know if the villages, the village could move the line back to where the cars are.
A stop line.
The stop, like where, where you go up until the light just to.
Yeah, so, and these, so Anthony is gonna look into a bunch of these issues. Obviously, we have to live within the manual of the traffic control devices and that maybe goes about this, that and the other thing. Including some complaints about where you're allowed to add a stop sign and where you're not, but.
Yeah.
Clearly, these are all.
I don't know if stop signs are, are the end issue. I know in that three-way stop, it's pretty big. And then there's, so I think that in this meeting, the the issues that we could just bring to light were the ones of just leading up to the light. Like I know that the state and the county were, it's gonna be a little bit of a longer road for that.
Yeah.
Um, the other idea was sort of the painting. I think that we, I forget who we were talking about with that, but basically creating sort of like a white, I will also say, I think the, the crossing guard, who is a very brave soul, it's, it seems very nervous and scared. The current crossing guard. My mom was a crossing guard at one point. So I, I definitely know that like it's, it's not an easy job. Um, you know, your nerves are like, if you don't have nerves, it's still, I think that particular one needs a little bit more policing. I don't know, just assistance. Uh, it seems very nervous at the stop. Um, and I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't know that he's.
A different person that's done it in recent years?
Well, he recently wrote like an op-ed or something, I think, for Pleasantville about how he thinks it's like very dangerous and things like that. He's, he's a wonderful man. I think that that particular post
Stuff.
Needs a little bit more, I, I have seen more police cars in the area, so that's helpful, I think, especially around very busy times.
I just, I mean, our guys have been trying to be a little more present in the region, but I noticed a county cop car couple of times now parked in the grass.
Yes, me too, yeah.
So that helps.
Yeah, I think we've, I mean, I called enough times as well. I think that they.
They're really wanting to shut things down on the Sawmill.
Yeah.
Doors.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it'll become, uh, so.
So the, oh, sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
Well, just one other thought about these great ideas, that the flag idea, at, at first thoughts, strikes me as a good idea.
Yeah.
But the more I, when you said the six, seven, eight second thing, it sounds to me like completely distracted drivers.
Hmm.
Right, you are looking down.
Yes.
So that the, you know, the strobe might catch their attention, but a ten-year-old with a flag, they're already, I think.
Yeah, are they really gonna make a difference?
They may not even be looking at the road if they're, if they're running a red light at that.
I agree. And now, I mean, I think it's just, it's coming, I'm bringing it to the attention of you guys because I think that the the residents on that side will want to do either pay for, they, they'll probably want to put up flags anyway, just in case. Like whatever adds to it is, is they're happy, we're happy to pull into and help pay for. And everybody's just like, well, let's try, let's try a different thing. So the flag is definitely a try. I don't know that it will solve. Um, anything that we could sort of add to that does not involve the state and the county, I think people are willing to like.
Yeah.
If it's paint, if it's like, if it's three D crosswalk signs, you know what I mean? Like, I think there's been several studies on that leading up to that. That's one thing that I definitely wanted to add to it. I said, and any sort of crosswalk around there, it doesn't have to be a stop sign. It could also just be like how we can work around it. Um, I think that the other, so that's the light. Um, uh, the fallen sign I mentioned to you guys, the speed cameras or speed, how fast you're going, I think those.
On Pleasant, for example.
On Pleasant, leading up to the Sawmill, if we can find a way to.
It's funny, I was in Massachusetts this weekend and there was one of those, several of them, that, that, uh, that that has the speed limit. And then it literally says, shows your speed and it says, you're going too fast, you're going too fast, you're going too fast. And you slow down and it says, thank you.
Oh, nice.
So it was kind of cool. Yeah.
That is great. Yeah, we, we, I, I've noticed them around town as well, like the ones that are, uh.
Yeah, I mean, we have a few that aren't that fancy, but.
All right, yeah, I mean, I definitely am having in my Amazon cart for my own speed camera, just to put it out on my own lawn. Um, but I think that I'm allowed to do.
Between you and Mattson, we're gonna have Big Brother.
We're gonna, we, we're, well, we're definitely gonna have just the data for it at least, you know, to, to kind of, I think it's hard to bring up an issue and know that there's not a lot we can do in one area of it and then see what we can in the others. Um, the, let's see, light on Sawmill, flashing, uh, let me see if there's one more. Um, police car station near the intersection with an officer of, for the, the crossing. But I think that's, historically, there's only been crossing guards at that, at that crossing, right, for some of the Sawmill.
So, I mean, our, our problem is, uh, at any given time, we usually only have two officers on the road.
Okay.
And if one of them is tied down at a crossing guard position, which happens sometimes when we don't have a backup and someone's out for whatever reason. Uh, it becomes an overtime shift and it, you know, it's a, it's a, and I will say ob- obviously, I'm highly sympathetic to the situation you have because of this special circumstance.
Yeah.
I will tell you that, uh, many neighborhoods feel the same way, although, you know, I think candidly, your situation is, is, um, a, a, a greater risk than some of the others.
Yeah, I think that that side of town is aware of, like, the, their closeness to the Sawmill. I just think also because of the amount of young children there, it's sort of shifted a bit.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it, because we're all smaller lots and I think because, uh, really, those, there's so many commuters amongst those three, those three streets. So I think that was speed-sensitive signals.
When you say commuters, you mean pedestrian commuters to the train? Or you mean driving commuters across the road? Or you mean all that?
Uh, it's, I would say that, I mean, well, yeah, people are, have different remote schedules, but people that would commute into the city on the train could be, you know, at least sixty-five percent um, of those three. And so you're talking about however many households that are, that is. I do know that people commute to Tudor Time. There are a very large chunk of people that have their daycare across the Sawmill. And some people now, I think, choose to drive because of the accidents as well. Um, you know, we are, we love that we're so close to the village. I mean, it's one of like my favorite things.
Yeah.
I grew up on the other side of town and I was like very weary of the no sidewalks and, you know, just being so close to the Sawmill. But I think what we are trying to make up where it's a, there's just so many, all of us are very, it's a very close community.
I was gonna say, I was really, I've been impressed in many neighborhoods, but in your neighborhood, this multi-generational kind of
It was, yeah.
Very nice get, gathering. All right, so I'm gonna, we'll forward this that you sent to everybody, including Nicole and, and Paul, who are not here tonight.
Yeah.
And we'll circle back to Anthony and, uh, uh, maybe edge into a conversation with DOT in a limited way about the, the sign that needs repair, you know, s- stuff like that, that's really easy and doesn't involve any policy on their part.
How long do issues like this, like the village, like, for example, stuff that the village can handle, like say, for example, stoplights or speed signs, like how long does that type of thing usually take?
Well, we can put up a speed sign, just buy it and put it up. If we're gonna add a stop sign, we have to have a local law to add it. Um, the idea of changing the speed limit village-wide to twenty-five instead of thirty would be a local law, a hearing.
Right.
Approval and then the process of replacing all the signs. So.
Just like six months to a year, like around there.
It doesn't have to be that long. Some of these things we can do, some of these things we can, we can do.
Maybe we can change some parking spaces to relieve pressure for people from your side of town on Vanville.
Yeah.
At the Valvoline, um, there were, to help, we removed some parking so that people turning right from coming from the west side of town wouldn't have, I don't know. There was a complaint from your side.
Oh, definitely.
Your side of town during the Sawmill project.
Yeah.
And that was changed in two months.
That's great. Okay, I mean, I think we're looking for a reference.
Well, and I mean, a few of these things, look, if, I mean, Anthony was talking about the idea of painting white lines on Pleasant a little tighter, kind of make it feel a little more respected. And, you know, if we decide go with those things, we can just do it.
Yeah.
So, but stopping raining.
There's kind of a definite.
All right.
Just one last thing, I know we're behind, but rumble strips, is that a non-starter, Peter, we stayed?
On the Sawmill?
Yes. Because they exist all over the country, in situations like this.
I, 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 you know, I don't, I don't know. Certainly, they have rumble strips on the shoulder when you're veering off.
Yeah.
Whether they would put a rumble strip crossing the highway and where it would be, I don't, we can certainly engage the question. That also creates noise.
Yeah, I think people are pretty accustomed to different noises. I mean, you know, on the Sawmill, it's better than the screech of an accident, which comes, you know, I think most people that live in that neighborhood hate that sound. So they would more prefer people, the rumble strips.
I'm just thinking about anything that can solve a distracted driver.
Yeah.
Problem, right?
A hundred percent. I mean, if it, if there was a tactical way to bring up to the state and county what they would be comfortable with, without feeling like they want to close it.
Right.
With that whole idealist. With that whole idealist, whatever it's.
And I think I I'm inclined to think it will keep you in the loop that maybe uh, fairly soon we engage the DOT Region Eight folks and say, hey, you know, here are a few ideas uh, on the, on the uh, the reasonable side.
Yeah.
I mean, among the things we are interested in is whether there could be a signal actuated light that said red signal is ahead that goes on, you know, it's turning red.
Yeah.
Uh, that obviously has to be down the road and there's clearly some wiring that had to be run in all of that. But that feels like low hanging fruit too, but.
Yeah.
But whether DOT will uh, go there, so. All right, I thank you. I appreciate it and all of your thoughtfulness from you and your neighbors and
Thank you.
Uh, such a reasonable and helpful and cooperative.
Oh, yes, definitely. Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much, guys.
All right, thanks, Yemi.
Thank you so much.
Our meeting in the field in front of our house was followed by the arrival of an ice cream truck for a kid's birthday party.
We'll have, we'll have another one for that. It'll be good.
Every meeting will have an ice cream.
It's become tradition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Yemi. All right, so more on that later. Uh. You know, I will also say a a few folks naturally have raised the question about a pedestrian bridge. I think, again, that is just uh, uh massively unlikely to happen. You'd have to have an elevator on both sides for ADA.
So then the cost of the issue there, you believe?
I'm not sure there's enough land uh, to do it. Um. But it would have, the the state is already opined that they wouldn't do it, that it would have to be seventeen feet high at the middle. Uh, and so you'd have to have an elevator on both ends and all that goes along with that, and then a cage over the top so people can't throw stuff onto the sawmill. And, you know, my experience with things like that as a pedestrian are they get pretty sketchy feeling pretty fast. And you, yeah, I mean, it would be many millions of dollars to do it. So I I honestly think that there is zero chance of that happening uh, with DOT's engagement, so.
And there are not exceptions to this elevator? The elevator requirement?
I believe there are no exceptions to the ADA law.
And it can't be a ramp, like, like it.
It can be a ramp, but by the ramp has to be so long to maintain.
I was saying, I live, I had lived, I mean, in Riverdale, there is one at two thirty Fifth Street over that, over the same road. And the ramp is not.
It may have been three, three ADAs, possibly. So there's a maximum angle for a ramp, so the notion being that a a wheelchair bound person should be able to navigate it themselves. And so to get up that high usually involves a long scissor rail.
It, I I'm not, I'm not questioning the value of the ADA, but in this particular case, we don't even have sidewalks on the other side where someone might, might be ex- I don't know, it just seems if there's no exceptions, there's no exceptions, but here we have a place where people are potentially dying.
I mean, the other thing it would be, it, well, so knock on wood, uh, I I was unaware of anyone being seriously injured injured as a pedestrian. I've never heard that. There certainly have been a long history over many years of accidents uh, with cars.
Yeah.
Um, not so much for pedestrians, again, knock on wood. But uh, solving the pedestrian crossing problem obviously would improve safety pedestrians. It doesn't do anything to solve the the drivers, distracted drivers going in red lights, so. Anyway, more like.
Seven point five percent is the maximum level to the ADA.
Right, which is not very much.
Not very much at all.
So. I mean, it's, it's a, I deal with this all the time, and likely you do too, in what you do. Um. Very right minded goal of universal access has actually had a very strong impact in in some realms about what people actually can do.
Yeah.
And conversely, created an incentive in lots of places for people to build one stories or explore all the buildings because they don't wanna pay for it, so. All right. Uh. Are you there, Mike? We kept you waiting.
I'm here.
Apologies for that.
No worries, no worries.
Uh, you want to do, open your PowerPoint?
Can you open it? Cause I'm having tech issues. I couldn't get my computer up, so I'm on my phone.
Going to share it. Okay, I've shared it.
All right. Great. So basically, this is just a a run through of what I've done so far and some designs that I've got gotten back. Um, and the designs I'm gonna show you are for, from one particular company uh, after talking with PRAB, um, this is the company I'd like to move forward with for a number of different reasons, but you know, so the future of our playgrounds, we can go to the next slide. Now, they're all about twenty years old, replacement costs and parts are getting harder and harder to find. Nantahagan, for example, I believe it was a year after that playground was put in, the manufacturer, the company went out of business, didn't sell any of their their stuff. Uh, so parts are are im- basically non-existent for replacement. Um. And with playgrounds, you have to replace with the manufactured specs. You can't, you can't put a different part onto it. Um, so Nantahagan definitely uh, is number one priority for me. Um, all three playgrounds are heavily used. I think new playgrounds in all three parks uh, would be a great benefit to the community. Um, and some funding, you know, we do have a grant that's earmarked to go towards playgrounds. Uh, we'd like to spread that out amongst the three. Uh, that's what the grant um, states.
Thanks to our former assemblyman, Tom Ebonati, for sending that grant our way.
Yes. Uh, so the next steps, like I said, I I reached out to several municipalities to see what people have done, what companies they've used, reached out to, I think I ended up having four companies come forward. Uh, and basically I gave them very pretty basic parameters. Uh, give me a design and a quote for playground. For each of my parks, give me two designs, uh, and I gave them a budget of a hundred thousand dollars and that was just equipment, that's not including install. Uh, so that we could get an idea of the different designs and and looks and and materials uh, that the di- different companies have. Um, some, some of them are are all you know, a good portion of them are fairly similar and then some of them have some pretty drastic, more modern stuff. Um, this particular company that I would like to move forward with uh, has a little bit of everything, uh, large company, so it's not a company I'm worried about uh, disappearing in twenty years. Um, and they've been used in several municipalities uh, around us. Uh, so I hoping to continue to move forward with them and and start really moving along on this. Uh, so if you wanna just run through, these are just different options for each park. Uh, now, none of these are set in stone. This is just, again, very simple parameters, hundred thousand dollars, have some eighty uh, ADA accessible uh parts, uh, you know, swing, uh, each of them has like uh, one section on the playground uh, that is accessible for, you know, a a wheelchair bound individual. Um, but you know, when we move forward, uh, we can dive into how much accessibility and what how much we wanna add to each of those playgrounds.
So these are proposals for a hundred thousand dollars of equipment at each location?
Correct. And so the the installs, I got quotes for that as well. Depends on 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 the equipment and how much you do, but you know, we're looking at between thirty five and probably fifty five for install.
Per location or total?
Per location.
So this would be round figures, a hundred fifty thousand at each playground. For a total of four hundred fifty thousand, of which we've got two seventy five in brand.
Correct.
What do they propose for the surfacing here?
Well, so that's up to us. I'm proposing the, to stay with the wood chips. I mean, the wood chips are ADA compliant. Um, my hesitation with the pour in place and it's it's something I I can dive into more if if uh, the board feels like they wanna a little more info on that. My concern is, um, the the maintenance on it is, you know, while it may last and cost us a little bit less, uh, with, instead of replacing wood chips, you know.
What is that product? What is that product?
Uh, it's called a pour in place. It's basically, they have it at Bedford Road School on their playground. It's a spongy like permanent material. But the prob- the the problem I've seen is if it, if there's damage to it or somehow it gets peeled up, you know, the the patchwork to replace it starts to, starts to look kinda shoddy. Same thing if there's graffiti on it, you you you, it's a, it's hard to to replace it without it starting to look kinda dingy, in my opinion.
Is it laid down on dirt or is there some underlayment that's rigid?
There's an under, there's an under layer.
Uh huh. And does it, is it water permeable or does the water sheet off it?
Water sheets off of it.
Okay. All right. So these are various views. This is Soldiers and Sailors. So um, not to jump ahead, but you also will get to the question of getting some parent feedback.
Yeah, that's that's one of the bigger reasons to to talk tonight is, is I I just wanna know what the board would like. So I I have um some survey questions that I started developing. Um, uh, my my first thought is to put together a survey and and put that out to the public, uh, you know, potentially in this month, July.
Uh huh.
Um, and get some feedback on on a number of different things. Um, you know, accessibility, uh, sensory uh, style, colors.
Uh huh.
You know, and you can see Rozelle, the second option, that this is one of the more modern looking playgrounds. It's a a lot of uh, ropes. Um, personally, not my cup of tea, but um, you know, there's. I guess so. Uh, but there's aspects, I mean, you can mix and match and add some of these aspects into these playgrounds. Um. So the the, they have a lot of nice options. Uh, this company is on Sourcewell and currently on state contract, although that contract's about to run out. They do intend to be on the contract whenever it gets renewed. Um, so that that makes it, makes them a little bit easier to work with as far as pricing, uh, and not having to essentially go out to bid to try to bid a playground to different companies.
Uh huh. Has PRAB seen these proposals?
Yeah, so PRAB saw a similar presentation with uh, the four other playground companies uh, that I received. Um. They they liked this company and actually the other company they they enjoyed was the um current comp- the company that built uh, Rozelle and Soldiers, actually. Um.
Again, very stuff.
Yeah, the current stuff. Um, he gave us, they they had nice designs as well. Um.
You prefer this company for a set of reasons, but.
I would, yeah, I would prefer this company, uh, you know, as far as design goes, they can do anything we want. So so, I mean, all these essentially can. Um. But they can mix and match. They're gonna be much easier to deal with as far as.
Any of these various options could potentially be spun out at any of the sites, right? I mean, they've shown.
Correct. And then, and then these, these options can be built off of, we wanna add, you know, as our survey says, okay, maybe, maybe people want more slides and more platforms. Uh, or they want more of the modern. We can, we can tweak and 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 add to any of these and make them exactly what we want.
And are we imagining that the age of the playground users is a similar range at all three or?
Yeah, we will, we'll have them set up this, this.
Targeted for younger kids, some for older?
It'll, it'll be, there will be two, each playground will have two structures. If you look one's not a great example, that Rozelle one's not a great example, but if you go back to the other ones, you'll see there's two separate, um two separate areas. Those are designed for the different age groups. It's like a two to five and then uh, five to twelve. And each of the playgrounds will have that uh, distinction. And they currently, they currently do, except for Soldiers, is one large structure. Uh, so with with Soldiers, we would, we would shift to doing the two different aged structures, age range structures.
As we think this out, are there other improvements that we ought to be thinking about? I mean, are there enough bench for parents to sit and watch? Or ought that ought that be something we add for, you know, connecting? I mean, does a company like this sell benches, for example?
Yeah, they do. Um, that that's definitely something we can look to add. I I think currently, I I I mean, my my perspective is is the benching is is pretty good right now, but might need to upgrade, but as far as as the number, I think we're okay, but I can put that into the survey questions. Which I would like to do.
Okay. All right.
I feel with some of the stuff with designing children's rooms and libraries and the thing that I might suggest is that as opposed to the general public input where you show some drawings to a lot of people and they give you feedback. If you take an intermediate step and ask for volunteers and get a group of like seven parents of each different age range and have them sort of intensively look at all of the options that you'll get a better product.
Okay.
So so people with kids that age, you know exactly what they, what their habits are, where it's gonna create a problem, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Mm hmm. Sounds good. I mean, would that be a reasonable, I mean, our our day camp families are a good resource for that, right?
Mm hmm. Yeah, that that absolutely can be done.
Okay.
Along those same lines of while while we're doing this, are there other things you might consider? Mike, I I think I brought this up to you, but in case not, I'll bring it up now because relevant. Uh, up in Beacon, New York, they have a really wonderful project that's called the We Woods, um, in one of their parks where they have an an entirely natural wood kind of climbing hill where there's the kind of balance beams and
Well.
old, you know, old tree stumps that have been constructed into uh, a system that you can walk on. And it it's always struck me that that extension of Nantahagan, uh, you know, where it was uh, the hillside by the pond with backing up to the forest. Now, I know that we don't own the, that's not our property, the forest, but um, not not to put more on your plate, but if you wanna, if you wanna dig around with this beacon um, site or if you're ever up there to have a look, um, it's, it's pretty beloved and it's a a different, you know, it's a different kind of experience, but one that uh, yeah, I think one that would fit well with Pleasantville's ethos. Um.
Especially in that little bit more.
In that, in that area.
Forested, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I I have looked at that. I have looked at those playgrounds. Actually, I'm hoping to take my daughter, actually, me and my wife have talked about going up there soon to see it for ourselves. Um, I can explore that uh, a little bit more. Would you, would you be of the mind to, that would be in addition to?
Right, yeah.
Playground?
Right, I mean, theirs was a community, you know, it's a kind of community generated and fundraised fundraiser thing that that started small and then you kind of added, added little bits as the years went on. So, yeah, just just something to consider as an alternative. No, no, sorry, in addition to the playgrounds constructed of metal and pl- metal and plastic that you're describing.
Yeah, uh, you know, and just a another thought, a- again, it's a little different, but you know, this company has a great line of uh, and you've probably seen it, the the basic, th- they're fake, but they're they're natural looking logs and and all of that. Um, you know, tunnels that are made out, i- it looks like a tree log, but it's, it's, it's faux.
Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like you provided a few sample questions for a survey. Maybe David's idea is the way to start to try to sort of get a, an expanded focus group together that covers the bases. Does that feel like a good way forward, Mike?
Yeah, that's fine. I I I'll put something together to get something out to the camp camp people, uh, and see if I can get some volunteers to kinda dive into that.
And dive into with the address is to make sure we get families that are near these three.
Yeah.
Like.
Right. Yep.
All right, great. Thank you for this work.
All right, thank you.
Hi.
Yes.
All right, so we're now running behind our schedule, but our next item was to talk about the moratorium, but we have, so we have ten minutes before our regular meeting and we can pick up thereafter. But um just to recap, uh, what you all already know, and obviously we're without Nicole and Paul, I think we were all five of us of the view that um we ought to allow. we ought to allow the moratorium to expire at the conclusion of uh, its time period, which is the end of July, uh, based on the data we have received from BFJ and uh, the fact that so so far as we're aware, um, the proposal for forty-four Bedford is the only one uh, that's that's uh, active at the moment. And and absent some movement on our part, would then come back to the planning commission. So a couple of items you guys have brought up, which clearly are are not reasons, I think, to um to extend the moratorium, but which we would commit to explore in the weeks and and several months to follow, is your view, should uh, concern, Michael, and digging further into affordable housing. One piece of that affordable housing uh, piece is that there's been some chatter back and forth from Albany about what led to the uh, demise of the governor's housing proposal. Um, and uh, apparently there is some, uh, I don't know whether likelihood is too strong a word, but some uh, reason to believe that in the in next year's legislative session, one of the pieces that may come out of that renewed conversation is the requirement that every community in New York State develop an affordable housing plan of some sort. Exactly what that plan would look like uh, is unclear, especially since the the tools that at our scale, uh, that we have available to us are are essentially limited, especially since some of them, for example, to increase the percentage requirement for um for affordable are typically things that would have to be paired with increased density because you would have made projects less viable and in the current interest rate environment, that may be happening all by itself, but anyway. Long way around saying there's a lot going to be coming at us in the coming year from Albany and and beyond as well. So I think it's fair to say we, if we were to allow the moratorium to expire, it would be to explore both of those two items uh, in in uh, in great detail in the weeks that and months that follow. Um, I'm headed to the planning commission at the end of the regular agenda this week. And they have the BFJ planning memo and I'm going to explore with them what their views are and any of this, and then I'll report back to all of us about uh, what they had to say. But one interesting piece that came out of a conversation Eric and I had with uh, Susan and with Jennifer Gray, it came to me was the possibility that further to the uh, recommendations that BFJ, like recommendations is the wrong word, the possibilities that BFJ presented uh, at the end of their uh uh, proposal to us was the idea that we could ratchet back some of the uh, bonuses that projects can receive for certain kinds of activities by taking a responsibility for adjacent public land, by by committing to uh, certain design standards, et cetera. And and one possibility there is that we might remove those bonuses uh, from the zoning code entirely, uh, and then make those requirements a part of the zoning uh, the base zone. So for example, instead of saying, we'll give you a bonus of some sort for following these design standards, we could instead say, there won't be a bonus for it and our zoning requires fulfillment of these design standards, which are at the moment relatively loosey goosey, but not without some uh, merit, and we could obviously explore down the road what that looks like. So two things to say about that, one of which is obviously a piece of the concerns that have come to us from our November meeting and beyond is the question of what projects look like and whether we're exerting sufficient influence over how they look, not us personally, but right, planning in its ARB role. And that comes from various directions, including some folks who would like a a very similar look for everything and others just like or don't like X or Y or Z. But anyway, that might be a way to uh, put a stake in the ground a about um uh, requiring a more thoughtful and thorough design review and at the same time, uh, not only removing a sort of bonus that says, if you do, we wish you would do, we'll give you something, but instead you say, you got to do what we want you to do, and at the same time, limit in in, I think relatively modest, but not in significant ways, some of the possible enhancements. So.
So the first part of what you're suggesting makes perfect sense to me. But I I don't know that I understand what the effect of the second part of eliminating the bonuses would be. I can understand saying we're going to put all of this just into the code and now you have to do this and you and these things, that what are now bonuses would be become just, you know, options under the code. What what I don't, taking them out, what I don't understand is what will that inhibit development? Will that have no effects whatsoever? And then it doesn't matter whether it's in or not, will it stop certain types of developments? I just don't know what the.
So much of that, you might, go ahead.
For your response, say that I see applies to some of them, but not all. For example, the one that eliminate the FBR bonus on counting misplace on land that the property owner intends to manage for public use. That incentive.
Yeah, that would go away. That would go away, I think, in time.
I was gonna say, I don't see how they're gonna apply it every uh.
Certain people to do it, or would we?
Okay.
So I I mean, further to what you said, David, say table thirteen on page twenty-two of the BFJ memo uh, shows the that for these sites that were analyzed, the maximum number units pre seven, twenty seventeen, the maximum non-units with the existing zoning and the impact of eliminating the FAR bonus and the land area requirement. Wouldn't have to do both of those things, but we could. Um, so you in the case of the broader solution, eliminating the FAR bonuses and the land area requirement for all of these sites together, it goes from a potential maximum build out of four to thirty units to a potential maximum build out of three seventy-six. So a reduction of, what, give or take fifty, fifty or sixty units? Or something in the realm of fifteen percent. Mm hmm. Hmm. So I throw that out to consider. We should get onto our regular meeting. We can talk further about this after the regular meeting and I'm going to kick that around with the folks of the planning commission on Wednesday night and see where where they are on it. They've had the BFJ memo for a few weeks now. So um.
So we're really talking about just the two bonuses then, if we're not talking about the public use land, wouldn't we?
Yeah, the 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 two bonuses are potentially the uh, the.
Because the design guideline doesn't affect the number of units.
Well, it it affects the number of units if you don't give a bonus for following them, which is the way it exists now.
Okay, but if we if we were to um write that into the zoning regularly, that would not affect the number of units?
Well, it would affect the potential of a given site to add units based on the bonus. So you can then hit it. It's easy to glaze over it, all of these numbers flying around, but go back and with this in mind, take a look at at Susan's analysis of each of these sites, and I think that helps.
Yeah.
Obviously, all of it is is hypothetical to the extent that you have no idea what an individual property owner has in mind or how they want to play it out.
So just, I guess, and I I apologize because I have read this whole month, but I don't think I've absorbed all of it.
Yeah, right. And here for time, I'd be something more.
Um. I guess the the question I'm not really resolved on is, are we trying to limit the number of apartments in the village? Is that actually our goal as a reward and as a village? Because that wasn't clearly not the goal of the last plan, at least as I read it.
Right, and further, uh, I mean, that obviously is is something that has been requested of us by various people. And now we have this analysis about the impacts uh, uh, in these various categories that hasn't supported the idea that we're overwhelming or services, da, 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 da. So that said, um. It 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 is also fair to say that there's a significant group of people that would like to see uh, s- some action and one possibility of of removing the bonus, but enforcing the design standards is that that would address, at least in a modest way, two concerns that have come our way. So. Related but unrelated, we have a little Mary memo from BFJ that we commissioned to raise back about ways to potentially strengthen the historical relay district that goes out that for road to the old village. And and that's a related, but unrelated to this specific thing, but also related to the bigger picture.
Well, that at least seems like something that both meets the um the desires of the people who dislike change um, as well as potentially doing something useful in terms of creating a a preserving a look and feel without getting too specific in the whole village.
Mm hmm.
Um. Whereas this feels more like you know, if it makes sense, if it if it's doing something useful um, to cut traffic or to do this or to that, that's fine, but we didn't find any of that.
Well, and I mean, as we have also found, the summer's project for forty-four Bedford Road being being an example, are likely to generate more traffic if they were fully populated in their current use than in the proposed use, but that is is an important piece of data, but it doesn't get to everything folks have been concerned about. And as they prove everything, everybody's a little bit right. There's a little uh, uh variability in how people view the world is inevitably the case. So, yeah, all right, if they don't want to, we'll go back to that. Um, we'll stop boring all of you. You're welcome to stay and be bored after. So. All right.
All right.
All right. Uh, that that is the end of our uh, work session and we'll begin our original meeting. We're ready to roll. All right, good evening and welcome to uh, the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, June twenty-six. Um, we began our evening with a work session at seven P M. and are rolling into our regular session. Uh, now, our next regular meeting is uh, two weeks from today on Monday, July ten. Work session at seven, regular meeting at eight. As is always the case, uh, you are welcome to log on and watch the goings on via Zoom, picking up a Zoom link at plezeville-ny.gov. You are also welcome to join us here at Eighty Wheeler Avenue. That's true not only for the Village Board, but for our other boards and commissioners, commissions. And uh, within a short period of time, you can pick up an on-demand webcast of this meeting as well as uh, the meetings that preceded it at PCTV seventy-six dot org. So we have an audience tonight, which is a a a delightful development because we don't often have an audience uh, at least in recent months. And the good reason we're having an audience tonight is we have a group of young women who have been exceptionally successful in their role as Girl Scouts and have undertaken a bunch of projects that have led to uh, uh, in a number of cases, the awarding of the Girl Scout Silver Silver Award. Uh, and in the case of two young women, uh, Girl Scouts Highest Award Golden, which is an honor that is received by a very small number of people. I think Danielle King, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, was it four percent of all Girl Scouts uh, ever achieve the Gold Award? And perhaps something like only ten percent uh, achieve the Silver Award. So um, it is no surprise to me that uh, Pleasantville's Girl Scouts are uh, are operating above their weight class and and providing the kind of great projects that uh, we will hear a little about tonight. So um, I will uh, invite each of you up to the podium. If anyone is brave enough to share with us a little bit about your uh, project, I very much encourage you to do so. Um, but no requirements if you would rather not, so. So we'll we'll um talk about the Silver Awarders against uh, to begin with. And and the first uh, come as a pair, Hanifa Thine and Camilla Brown. Um, hopefully I've been mentioning them in a name recently. Are both of you here?
Uh, no, I'm Hanifa, but my friend Camilla's away.
All right. Uh, Hanifa will uh receive this for both of you. You guys were involved in Lego STEM class. Care to share with your community a little bit about what you did?
Uh.
Come on around.
So we wanted to try and adjust the kind of issue that there are not as many STEM kind of activities in Pleasantville. So we created classes and we fundraised um, to teach kids about coding and programming and life skills like using teamwork through Lego. And we had them do fun challenges. And at the end, we donated our materials and shared with them our curriculum to BRS so that they can keep using our stuff for the kids in the future.
These are the moments that make you feel like the world's going to be okay, right? So uh, we have a certificate for you and and for uh, Camilla. Uh, the Board of Trustees honors Hanifa Thine for earning a Girl Scout Silver Award, uh, Silver Award honoring uh, her service and accomplishment on behalf of a proud community. And and um, I say that with conviction. So thank you so much. Congratulations. All right, slingshots and archery?
Yes.
Sounds hazardous.
Um, so I noticed that not many kids knew about archery and so I learned about different benefits of archery and how it helps children with their development. And so I wanted to teach that to a bunch of children and teach them how to use slingshots for younger children and archery for older kids. And so I had I held a bunch of events and um, taught like older um, instructors how to use slingshots and that carried on to a camp so that now they use online.
Well, Maya, uh, that sounds just great. And again, we have a certificate for you and uh appreciate uh, all that you have done and appreciate, obviously, your accomplishment, your festoon with badges and tags and all of that is an indication of high level of performance as a sketch.
Yeah.
Abigail King. Field hockey.
Yeah. So I established a field hockey program in the Bronx for underprivileged kids. Um, because number one, I love this sport and I felt it was very unfair that these kids got to watch other kids enjoy things that they may have not been able to enjoy. So I wanted to give them, you know, just share a little bit of happiness and for them to enjoy possibly enjoy the sport that I love so much and give that a bit of that.
Really, really, really uh, taking some of the advantages we have here and helping folks who don't always have those advantages. So thank you, Abigail King. Congratulations. Sarah Agavon. A little free library.
Yeah. Um, so I built a little free library, which is like a really large birdhouse or a really tiny building. It's a system where you have a bunch of books in there and someone will take a book and return it or take a book and keep that and leave the blue book. And I put it outside of Austin's Children's Center to allow the little kids who go there to have a quick and easy access to books, like always.
It's a fantastic thing and the little free libraries are popping up here and there and your efforts uh, encourage other folks to do it. I noticed we we received one in in front of the Presbyterian Church as part of the Pleasantville Children's Center lately. Um, uh, so thank you for that. A great project. Uh, and I think I'll think of it as a little building instead of a big birdhouse. Thank you, Sarah Agavon. Elizabeth Dean. Flying beetle.
Yeah.
That sounds like fun.
Yes, really.
All right.
So I noticed there wasn't um, any kind of track programs or running programs for younger kids in our community. And running is a sport that I'm very passionate about. So I ran a one-week track program for kids in grade second through four. And running is a sport that I'm very passionate about. So I ran a one week track program for kids in grade second through fourth with the help of some of my friends, including Sarah. And um, the track coach and athletic director, I put together um a program with different running games and hopefully the kids are able to take these skills on and run throughout their lives.
Thank you, Elizabeth Dean.
Thank you.
It's it's every project is better than the last, which means whoever is latest uh uh has has just outdone themselves. So uh, those were our silver uh uh honorees. And there are two young women who have received scouting's highest award, uh, the gold award. Uh, the first is Ella Dunnas. Pretty amazing. Let us know what you did.
So I started a zero waste station at the Pleasantville Farmers Market. But more than that, I wanted to make Pleasantville more sustainable, especially surrounding composting. So I worked mostly with the farmer's market and also with Pleasantville Cycles to um have the zero waste station at our farmers market and promote the zero waste um initiatives that Pleasantville already has. So such as at the music festival and with new draft recycling program. That's right, everything.
Amazing. It is uh, obviously, all of these are great projects. Yours in particular, one that has implications all the way down the road. And uh, it it amazes me uh to see so many young people involved in some things that sometimes their parents haven't been so focused on. And as is very often the case, uh, it's you guys who have something to teach us. So uh, thank you so much uh for doing that. So
Thank you.
I have a certificate here that honors you for earning the gold award, the highest award in Girl Scouting. And uh, for such a uh significant accomplishment. Uh, this certificate says that on behalf of a proud community, uh, be it resolved that June twenty seventh, that would be tomorrow, that shall be known as Ella Dunnas Day. So you only have a few hours to plan for raids and possibly fireworks. Rose Collins, our other gold award winner. Ten Pel Project.
Yes.
Tell us about it.
All right. So I started my project when we were uh doing hybrid learning and we were at home to the COVID. And I noticed a lot of teenage citizens didn't really have a whole lot of contact with the outside world as young kids who are learning from home. And so I decided to connect the two through the law start of letter writing. So I worked with the senior citizens at the Quinton Street Senior Center and every single third grader at the R S to uh connect them, you know, with each other through letter writing. So I also developed a curriculum to teach uh, third graders and just other elementary schoolers how to write a formal uh friendly letter.
Cool. You've got all the pieces, third graders connecting with with seniors and uh communicating with one another in in ways that we should all model. Um, just as was the case with Ella. Uh, on behalf of a proud community, it be resolved in June twenty eighth, that's the day after Ella's day. Everyone should get their own day. Uh, you know, throughout the village as Rose Collins Day uh before uh all the great accomplishments you have as a gold award winner. Thank you. So thanks to every one of these young women who are are uh doing such great things and modeling such a great projects. Uh, no doubt uh, we will see more of you and the people that have followed you uh following in your footsteps uh here in this village. Uh, it it, as I said at the outset, always makes me feel like the world is gonna be okay when we have young people who step out of their own lives uh and and unselfishly, but sometimes courageously, always with good effort uh and with high intelligence, uh do something to make the world a better place. So it's one of the happiest nights of the year when we get to say thank you to all of you. And I add to that, thank you to the parents uh who have been a party to all of this and a special thank you to the scout leaders who have a help guide all of you in this process. Uh, a great bunch of people in this great village and the uh by on behalf of the entire board. Uh, thank you all and congratulate you on this great, great accomplishment. So, thank you all. I think we should have all the awardees up here and we should get a couple of pictures, right? Come on. Front of the great Pleasantville gazebo, need a point. Yeah, that's right. Why don't you array yourself in front of the table here? We'll get a couple of pictures. Someone else has to take it, because my phone is attached to the tablet.
Are you guys gonna get a picture with it?
All right, then we need, oh, okay, good.
All the popper off.
Open these and get off the rest. They'll follow you all the way home to take them pictures.
All right, in ten years, the five of the eight of you can be sitting at this table. Thank you all. All right. Uh, welcome back. Sorry for the delay, but we had a perfectly appropriate opportunity to chat with uh uh these young women and their families. Uh, and uh, we say thank you for all the good work they do. Um, back to our
We have a public hearing now?
That we we do. Let me ask, uh, for starters, however, whether there is uh any comment uh from any member of the public. We have lost all the members of the public who were in the room. Uh, and I don't see any raised hands in the Zoom panel. Uh, so with that, is there a motion to open the public hearing concerning introductory local law five of twenty twenty three to amend chapter one seventy three, section seventy five of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning parking on the east side of Memorial Plaza?
I've been waiting to do this all week, so I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion approved. Uh, Eric, it's just buttoning down uh the logistics of our parking revisions.
Yep, it uh has always been signed. So this is the parking uh on the Memorial Plaza side. That's north of the gazebo. Uh, it's signed for two hours. Uh, the code had listed it as an eight hour uh parking area. Uh, subsequently updated to twelve hour, but now we are cleaning it up to reflect what it's actually been for a limitation.
I like to think of this as redressing a historic law.
Yes.
All right. All right.
Well said.
Any uh further comment from any member of the board? There being none, is there any comment from a member of the public? There being none, is there a motion to quote close our rocket fast public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done. Public hearing opened, public hearing closed. Uh, I had a few announcements uh to make. Um, the the a couple of of uh recent events uh that I wanted to point out. Um, a week or so ago, I went to an event that was held at Saint John's Church uh at the corner of Sunnyside and Bedford. And uh, they were uh uh among other things introducing uh the results of a long, long uh project uh to to uh restore their landmark building. That church uh was originally built in nineteen twelve. Uh, it is now uh uh on the National Register of Historic Places. Uh, and the adjacent building that is used as directory that the residents for the uh pastor uh is believed to be possibly the oldest building in Pleasantville, uh at least the the core of it is uh dating back to seventeen thirty four. So uh, there have been several additions to it, but um, the church uh has been working with Charles Todd Hickles, Charles Hickle officially, uh uh a restoration architect uh working on uh restoration of the building and uh restoration and improvement of the rectory. And the result of that is really a gift, I think, to the entire community. Uh, that church and its parish hall are very often used for events unrelated to the church. And a lot of uh uh important activities have happened in that building, which is now uh looking better than I ever remember it. Uh, and really, really, really great work on the rectory, again, dating back to seventeen thirty four. Uh, and i- inside that house, uh, it is easy to remember uh or imagine, I should say, uh what life was like in Pleasantville a a couple hundred years ago when that was a farmhouse for uh, what was at the time, uh, an orchard all around in in that neighborhood. So congratulations to Saint John's on this great work. They're not done yet. There's still fundraising for further work, uh but really extraordinary uh work have been done on a great Pleasantville landmark. Um, the only thing I wanted to mention, which I I think I mentioned once before, but there is repeating is that um, local resident Michael Inglis has written a book called Woods and Water, um, which is a a about walking New York's Nantahagan Brook. Uh, he he Michael wrote the book. It's it's uh illustrated by Gigi Koberlak, uh also a resident and and recently the president of P C T V. Uh, that book is on sale at the bookstore uh on Washington Avenue. It's also on sale at Black Cow. A really, really, really interesting look into this piece of nature uh uh along Lake Street and and up into the woods. Uh, and I thank Michael Inglis for doing it. And I encourage every single resident uh to seek out that book and and find out more about it. Um, couple of uh uh things further to to call out. Now, one is uh, we have a whole bunch of places that uh have been announced as twenty twenty three award winners, winners for the best of Westchester. A long list, Rack and Tour Bar Kitchen Taco Project, Second Mouse Cheese Shop, Pleasantville Farmers Market, Chatterbox Restaurant, Fat Root, Left Terrace Gyro, Southern Table, Arc Stages, the Pleasantville Music Festival, Jacob Renz Film Center, Soul Brewing Company, uh, the Village Bookstore, the Breaking Ground Dance School, Chad Kraus Photography, Pro Clinic Sports Physical Therapy and Chiropractic Wellness, that's Willing Cooking Studio, Donna Muller Photography, The Flower Basket, Tom Celiano, Mount Pleasant Councilman, but uh pro at Pleasantville Country Club uh and uh the Willing J A Hankles. So um, as has been the case for some years, running Pleasantville is uh disproportionately represented in the list of the best of Westchester uh in comparison to our square footage and uh our our population. So uh, congratulations to all of those folks uh for the well deserved honor as uh best in Westchester for their category. And then um, uh our nearby neighbor, uh uh Pace University at their Pleasantville campus, just outside the village, but uh, we, together with our friends in Mount Pleasant, claim them, claim them as our own. Um, had a really extraordinary uh moment when their uh women's lacrosse team won the national championship. Uh, and uh, they recently were invited to the White House uh as national championship teams often are. Uh, and in early September, Pace is gonna be planning a celebration for uh the first ever uh Pace National Champion. Uh, and congratulations to the women's lacrosse team. So Eric Morris, he's a lacrosse guy. He can report the significance of becoming a national champion.
It's amazing using accomplishment.
So is that the team based at this campus?
Yeah, that's great.
It is. It is. Yeah. So pretty, pretty amazing. Then um, we're without Paul Alvarez and Nicole Askew tonight, so uh we'll keep uh some of our comments uh fairly uh short tonight, but uh, call out to everybody, we're now uh slightly less than two weeks away from Saturday, July eighth, uh which is the seventeenth annual Pleasantville Music Festival. Uh, please buy your tickets early, PleasantvilleMusicFestival.org. Uh, you can buy tickets online with a modest surcharge and you can go to the rec center uh and buy tickets with with no service fee if you prefer to do that, but it's gonna help a lot to get your tickets early. Uh, you will come right in and avoid a line uh at the gate. Uh, we are anticipating an exciting day. So PleasantvilleMusicFestival dot com, I guess it is, PleasantvilleMusicFestival dot com. Did I say dot org the last time? PleasantvilleMusicFestival dot com. Uh, all the info is there in the entire lineup, uh as well as the link to buy tickets. Anybody else have something to add to my groaning here? The silence. All right. With that, uh, let's go to resolution number two thirty nine. David, I will share my screen for folks to follow along.
Resolve, Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on June twelve, twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections to the minutes of June twelve? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Two forty.
For the Board of Trustees.
Sorry.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty three as listed below.
Okay. From the general fund, uh seventy four dollars from account uh
Penny, you can just read the title and
Okay.
skip the account codes.
From uh Board of Trustees Conference to account legal notices, eight hundred and ninety dollars from snow overtime to highway equipment, one thousand six hundred and forty two dollars from snow overtime to garage utilities, four thousand seven hundred twenty eight dollars from snow overtime to garage repairs, six thousand six hundred and three dollars from snow overtime to garage gas and diesel, two hundred and twenty two dollars from snow overtime to fire, gas and diesel, one thousand one hundred and ninety three dollars from snow overtime to garage outside service, one hundred and eighty four dollars from snow overtime to street lighting outside service, seven thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars from snow salt storm sewer supplies, eleven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars from snow salt to storm sewers outside service, three thousand seven hundred and thirty five dollars from snow salt to leaf supplies, one thousand two hundred and thirty eight dollars from recreation administration on prints to Panther credit card fees, one hundred dollars from park supplies to pool equipment, one hundred and thirty four dollars from park supplies to trees contractual, eight hundred and fourteen dollars from park supply to special event supplies, one thousand two hundred and fifty six dollars from parks repairs to pool repairs, two hundred and eighty one dollars from recreation preschool supplies to special event supplies, three thousand six hundred and ninety two dollars from Panther part time to camp credit card fees, one thousand dollars from Panther outside service to Lakeshore Utilities, one thousand eight hundred and sixty one dollars from Panther Custodial to pool supplies, one hundred and ninety three dollars from Panther Custodial to pool credit card fees, three hundred and ninety dollars from Panther Custodial to camp outside service, seventy three dollars from recreation adult part time to farmers market part time, ninety one dollars from fest- uh festival part time to festival expenditures, three hundred and ninety seven dollars from storm sewers uh to overtime to sanitary sewer to overtime, two hundred and fourteen dollars from leaf overtime, the street cleaning overtime, one hundred and thirty four dollars from banners signs to beautification, a total of fifty thousand seven hundred and nine dollars from the general fund transfers. From the water fund, it one hundred and forty two dollars from administration supplies to supply telephones, one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars from administration supplies to supply supplies, two thousand two hundred and sixty six dollars from administration engineering to supply utilities, one thousand three hundred and five dollars from distribution over nine to hydrants, fifty six thousand nine hundred and forty six dollars from retirement to contractual, four thousand three hundred and seventy eight dollars from social security to contractual, twenty four thousand and forty three dollars from medical to contractual, thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy eight dollars from Medicare reimbursements to contractual, a total of one hundred and three thousand five hundred and seventy eight dollars transfers from the water fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is the fiscal year and cleanup?
That's right. Um, and then just in the water fund, all the contractual, that's the variable rate with the the kind of new capacity. So obviously with the rising rates and then also the rising water usage, we're about ninety eight thousand over on the expense side. So that's We're about ninety-eight thousand over on the expense side, so that's. We did, well, on the revenue side to cover that.
Yeah, so I'm good with everything except moving the money from storm sewers to sanitary sewers. So that the general fund transfer is a fifty thousand seven hundred and nine dollars. Uh the vast majority of of those overfunded uh accounts arise from our mild winter.
That's right, yeah.
Snow overtime, snow and salt, so.
That's right.
There may be other reasons we should hope for snow, but uh there is. Is uh a positive aspect to a winter that didn't present too much snow, so. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve two forty-one, David.
Did we just trade that off though for floodwater issues?
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
The precipitation is gonna come.
Exactly.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendment, budget amendments for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four. As. Forty, four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars from contingency to camp scholarships. Two thousand three hundred and four dollars from contingency to TBA Welfare Fund for a total of six thousand. Four hundred and nineteen dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
So again, this is in the current fiscal year.
Correct.
This uh camp scholarship uh was underfunded?
Yeah, uh we typically budget fifteen thousand every year.
Right.
Uh we saw, first off, camp enrollment skyrocketed this year. I think it's our our highest enrollment in. Uh summer camp ever. Um and with it came um more requests for scholarships.
Glad to be able to support.
That's great. How many scholarships are we giving out?
It's a good question. I will get you that number.
Great, thank you. All in favor? I motion approve two forty-two.
Like resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the establishment of a petty cash fund in the amount of. Two thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of making change at the front gate box office of the Pleasantville Music Festival on Saturday, July eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
If you buy your ticket in advance, we won't need to use the petty cash fund. All in favor?
Aye.
I approve PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. Back to you, David, two forty-two.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees hereby accrues the abstract for payment of claims dated June twenty-six, twenty. Free for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three covering check numbers one oh seven six one eight to one oh seven six six nine. In the general fund, seventy-three thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-two cents from the special fund. Twenty thousand dollars from the water fund, one hundred fifty-four thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and forty-three cents from the capital fund, thirty-one thousand. One hundred and three dollars and seven cents from the refuse fund. Four hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents for a total of two hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-two cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Payment of claims attached. You can always dig into it at Pleasantville Music Play, not Pleasantville Music Festival. Pleasantville Music and Mike dot gov uh and click into our agenda and see. Uh all of the detail behind all of these items. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve two forty-four.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accrues the abstract of payment of claims dated June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Covering check numbers one zero seven six seven zero to one zero seven seven nine eight. The general fund, four hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Special fund uh or special one thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Water fund, thirty-six thousand five hundred and one dollars and thirteen cents. Capital fund, two thousand four hundred eleven dollars and thirty-four cents. Refuge fund, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and forty-eight cents for a total of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars and ninety-one cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
And again, this is for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four. Our fiscal year ends in May, begins in June, and this time of year, we're. Straddling two fiscal years and ascribing expenses to the year which they were incurred.
This one includes what? A two hundred thousand dollar payment for healthcare?
Yep, there's healthcare, there's insurance, um a lot of the beginning of the fiscal year payments are a lot of music fest.
To be clear, though, it's not just the music fest.
No, no, the music fest is a very small.
Thirty-five figure number.
Yeah, yeah, uh this is mostly healthcare.
Yeah.
Uh and uh our insurances.
Yes.
Are we doing on ticket sales to the music festival?
Okay, I think we're kind of in tracking where we were last year, give or take.
They've jumped last few days.
Yeah, which is great. All right, uh all in favor of two forty-four?
Aye.
I motion approve two forty-five. David.
Whereas introductory local law five of twenty twenty-three has been introduced to amend chapter one, seventy-three, section seventy-five of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville. Concerning parking on the east side of Memorial Plaza. And whereas the public hearing concerning introductory local law five twenty twenty-three was held. Enclosed on June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. And now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts introductory local law five. Of twenty twenty-three, which shall become local law six of twenty twenty-three. Upon its passage, the local law is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
This refers to our previous Rocket Fest public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve. Back to you, Michael, two forty-six.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees in support of the Pleasantville Music Festival, Saturday, July eighth, twenty twenty-three authorized that no parking signs will be posted with restrictions. Then particular access to Hopper Street, Village Lane and Elm Street will be in effect for Saturday, July eighth, twenty twenty-three through six AM to ten PM. Further resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorize the police chief to tow all vehicles violating the temporary parking and road restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this aligns with what we uh had done last year, uh and Elm Street in particular, it's our residential street very close to the music festival and. Uh absent the uh restriction, they end up uh chock a block with uh folks parking all day. Uh we seek to defend their neighborhood against that and thus include them in the restrictions. So all in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve two forty-seven.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the establishment of a perimeter for the Pleasantville Music Festival. To include Hopper Street, Village Lane and Marvel Avenue between Hopper Street and Village Lane. For the purpose of the pivoting unauthorized solicitation, peddling and campaigning on Saturday, July. Eight, twenty twenty-three, between the hours of ten AM and ten PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Simply uh uh avoiding the possibility that uh. Folks arriving at the music festival uh in the immediate perimeter of it would be uh presented with. Folks trying to sell something to them or convince them to uh engage in some activity of them coming to the music festival. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve two forty-eight. Michael.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby ratifies it, ratified and approves the employment agreement between Eric Gressner, Chief of Police. And the Village of Pleasantville and authorizes the mayor or the village administrator to execute the same.
Is there a second?
Second.
Contract is attached. Uh our chief, Eric Gressner. Uh has been doing a fine job for us. We have engaged in a extended conversation with him. Uh and established uh what I think all of us feel to be an appropriate level of compensation and an appropriate. Uh separation between uh him and the folks who work for him, and I am pleased to. Uh vote yes on this. All in favor?
Aye.
I?
Aye.
Motion approved. Two forty-nine, David.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees hereby waive the thirty-day requirement for liquor license for Jean Jacques New York LLC. Four sixty-eight Bedford Road waivers attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is a routine thing. Uh a liquor license is issued by the state liquor authority, not by the Village of Pleasantville. Uh we are not opining in any way about the merits of this, other than to say. Uh we see no reason why they should be required to wait thirty days to get this resolved. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve two fifty. Last of our list, Michael.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to advertise for the Nanahegan Brook H and H analysis and retaining wall and water system improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, do you want to give the the summary of this episode?
Yes, so uh this is um a portion of the Nanahegan Brook wall. That runs around uh where the PCTV studio is to Lake Street. Um the banks uh and the walls have started to erode uh over a number of years due to uh various storms. Um uh we are engaging uh or seeking to benefit this RFP to engage an engineering firm to help design. Uh the the replacement wall. Um the other important factor is it's partially holding up. Um uh the roadway and under the roadway are water utilities and electrical utilities. So. The walls were to fail, um it becomes a bit of a catastrophic situation. Um so uh this will design the project, look at hydraulics, that's H and H's hydraulics and then and you know. Another another word.
Another H word.
Um what DPW and Anthony Carr are seeking to do is uh help uh uh. Increase the capacity of the Brook in general from the pool all the way down through this channel as well. So it's kind of a holistic view.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved. That is the last of our uh regular items. Anybody have new business to bring up?
Nay.
Any comment from a member of the public? Raise your hand in the chat if so. I see uh none. So with that. Uh we'll adjourn the meeting and return to work session to make sure we finished off the items we had begun. Um is there a motion to adjourn?
Arrived.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved. Thank you all. Congratulations again to the eight young women. Uh six Girl Scout Silver Award winners uh and two. Uh Girl Scout Gold Award winners. Uh congratulations to all of them. Uh and uh to their families. Uh we look forward to seeing you two weeks from today, Monday. By ten uh in between. Uh we wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. And we hope to see almost all of you on the eighth at Pleasantville Music Festival. Good evening. Back to work session. All right, so um just to further discussion and or. Come up with uh the way forward on the moratorium issues. As I mentioned, I'm going to the planning commission on Wednesday night and will engage them with what their thoughts are about the B F J uh. Study and any actions they might imagine arising from it. I think we're all of similar view, including the two who aren't here, that we should let the. Moratorium expire. Um and uh the impact of that is essentially. Not significant, except it would then allow for four forty-four Bedford to return to the planning commission. Um there are a couple of of adjustments to the zoning that might affect their project at some level. Uh but um we'll commit to exploring the USHET amendments to the. To zoning, commit to further regulation of the affordable housing issue. Both items that are not uh at the moment essential to to. Justify an extension of a moratorium. And then really the question then is, do we want to avail ourselves of any of the. Uh proposed tweaks to the zoning that E F J presented to us and in our conversations with them.
At least one of which would affect four forty-four Bedford, right?
Potentially. So Susan's taking a look at that, but they did not take advantage of a couple of those bonuses. Uh but if we change, if we, the the uh the minimum lot area piece could affect them per that. Uh chart on page twenty-two.
Right.
That would reduce.
That's what I was facing.
Right, right. So um my own view of of that is uh. Not definitive. I do think the idea of eliminating the bonuses from meeting the design standards and instead making them compulsory. Is a logical idea. The issue of the minimum lot area, I'll be interested to hear what zoning, what the planning commission has to say about that and also. That group of seven people and the folks they talked to in the village about um their view of development in general, so.
Yeah, I mean, I just think I I agree with making the things that we want people to do mandatory as opposed to. Incentivized. Um and other than the ones, one incentive that doesn't make any sense going forward, though, I think. The process that we just went through was people being concerned that things that they saw, mostly cars stacked up in a line. Were being created by um apartments that were being built as a result of. Um the most recent zoning changes, but really a philosophy that. Michael's research that goes back to the sixties or something like that, um that we're finally achieving. Um and and so we undertook the research to see if those things. Uh really did tie back to the apartments and the answer is that they don't. Um and that the likely outcome of more. Of um in the walkable downtown district is not to increase traffic. Um and so my perspective, while I understand that. People were upset and want to see action, the action that we took was to really do a scientific investigation. That was quite thorough of their concerns and, you know, if we want to reduce traffic. Think about not driving your child to DRS and getting them to walk. Think about. Not taking the extra trip downtown in the middle of the day or driving at times that are. You know, those are the things that are causing the traffic, not, you know, somebody whose car is parked downtown. Who's walking a block or two to to go to a restaurant or go to a store or whatever. Um so my perspective is we know that there are good results of apartments. Uh they support local businesses, they give us tax revenue, uh they help us keep overall taxes low. Uh they allow us to hopefully eventually influence the. The cost of apartments, you know, as the inventory grows, there will be some effect, even though. Obviously, with these first apartments, they're all quite expensive and, you know, it horrifies us that it could be that expensive to live in the village, but. Um. You know, I see the virtuous side of them. I don't frankly see. Uh I I understand what people were concerned about, but I don't see that it's related to actually. Uh mixed-use development in our A one district.
Yeah, I was really compelled by the trip generation numbers that that came out of the report. As I went back over and over them again. Especially as compared to, as you said, if there were a full commercial use of some of these buildings.
Right.
With uh. Short-term users, you know, people are coming into a place where short appointments or whatever services are being provided. Uh the residential use for car trip generation is markedly lower. Uh in some cases dramatically lower. So that that was very helpful to me. Um I think we also, when we had our traffic meeting. Or we had our uh work session, I should say, with seeing a thing in time devoted to traffic last October. Where uh, well, I I guess I was the one talking, doing most of the talking, presenting uh all of the causes. You know, that people are experiencing uh and relief that will come and then relief that is kind of unknown. The relief that will come, almost all of it is gonna be done by this fall, right? In terms of the, some of it's already done, some of the project being over, but. The the mannequin room corridor or Memorial Plaza, Cooley Street, you know, these things are all. All to come and they're they're already having an effect. So I I this is, this is, we have a lot of data and we're generating traffic, we're gathering traffic data. But we also have kind of battling anecdotes going on right now. We're battling personal experiences, so. I was uh listening and reading to complaints about traffic. In Memorial Plaza and I happened to have a little time this week. And so I sat in the gazebo for one hour each day, the middle of the day. I mean, not, yeah, last, sorry, last week, uh I mean, middle, middle of weekdays, right? And so this is my own, not data, my anecdote. Uh I saw a very smoothly moving. Traffic lane, traffic lanes combined with short-term and long-term parking and pedestrians and kids on bikes. All kind of working the way that civil engineers proposed it was going to work. I saw maybe one person per day illegally parking. Or one person per hour, you know, like stopping for the post office or or backing into an angled spot that they shouldn't have. or one person per hour, you know, stopping for the post office or or backing into an angled spot that they shouldn't have. Um but we, as we all know all too well, we cannot control all new behavior. We can, we can nudge it in certain directions. We can build build, you know, guardrails and incentives and punishments, but we can't control all this. We can enforce all of it. We don't live in a police state. We can't enforce everything, but generally speaking, it looks to me like the design is going to work, and especially when Manville and Cooley are done, the design will work even better. And the little things we've changed, such as the three spots on Manville by Valvoline, that works. Other proposals we've analyzed and not done, I'm now glad we didn't do, you know, we kind of lived with it more, so this is not to say that everything we're deciding is right, for sure, but I'm still absolutely in a wait-and-see mode for the central business districts. And, you know, if we're in the middle of renovating a kitchen, just the most horrific thing in the world to live through, you wouldn't, you wouldn't analyze what it's going to be like in the end, and kind of finish, finish it out, and we're, we're in the middle of renovating our kitchen. Which is the middle of our town, you know, and let's, let's see it through. We can change parking four years from now. We can, we can, there's things we can do in the future. So I know it's not exactly what.
I mean, I agree with.
Off a little bit, but you brought up traffic and I just, it is very much on people's minds, but we're, people are seeing the world differently, they're receiving different things, you know. Now, on Saturday at noon, is it getting busy? Of course. That's the busiest time. We have the farmer market, we have trucks, we have everyone out and about, no doubt. That's going to be busy, and that's a good thing.
I, I mean, I think it's probably fair to say that uh a downtown that is never crowded is not a successful downtown.
Correct.
That doesn't mean we want it crowded all the time. I, I agree with your experience. I've spent quite a bit of time watching my co's on at Memorial Plaza since we've now uh provided the angle partner on both sides and, you know, a number of people called me and Facebook was full of commentary about uh of the disaster that some believe this, and and my experience, just as yours, doesn't bear out any of that, and indeed part of our goal here was to slow down the speed demons in Roger Memorial Plaza. Uh which in all the years I've been involved in this, has been perhaps the primary location for pedestrian uh safety complaints. Um and and a number of folks who I've talked to hadn't quite ingested the reality that Cooley Street is going to get pushed through as a full two-way street. And when that happens, there's another connection between Manville and Bedford that doesn't involve Memorial Plaza, and that's also a form of, so. Um all those things are true. I will say your, your metaphor about renovating the kitchen and wait-and-see is, in one respect, the argument that some folks have made to say, please stop all development. Uh let what's happened pan itself out, uh and then, you know, open up the valve if it feels appropriate. The problem, of course, with that idea is that we're messing with people's property rights.
Right.
And also affecting uh the general interest in development in our community when people start to get the idea that you, you can't uh make any assumptions about what Pleasantville would be willing to accept in terms of development, and I, I I mean, all of us have moments when we uh see projects that aren't our favorite thing or or that we uh uh really wish could happen a few years down the road, but we don't get the opportunity to decide when people need or want to sell their property or that somebody else wants to buy it and use it in a different way. You know, one of the, one of the uh happy stories about downtown Pleasantville is in an environment where so many of the uses that were common thirty years ago are no longer viable. We haven't ended up with a disaster of a downtown in fed, in instead new and and uh uh interesting uses, mostly services and food, have populated some of the spaces that were once um bricks and mortar retail, recognizing the reality that uh a lot of the bricks and mortar retail is not likely to be coming back. I will say further to what David said, more people around town shopping in stores increases the likelihood that uh we will start to see some more niche retail because there are enough people to support it, so. Um. I, I think what we're all saying in various different flavors and with various different slants on it is that um it certainly isn't supported by the analysis so far that the development we've seen is putting a tremendous uh stress on the infrastructure in general. Um but I'd be interested to hear what the seven members of the planning commission have to say about that, and also what they have to say in their role as the ARB about what feels like might be helpful in their efforts to enforce design standards of some kind and what they imagine that might look like. Because, you know, for some people, design standards is, I want everything to be, you know, brick-toed or kind of downtown Bronx City. That clearly is not what our downtown has been about, and we have quite a wide range of of uh buildings, uh some of which are more interesting than others, but no definitive style, and perhaps the brand is that, right? So.
Well, it sounds like uh I haven't been to any of the meetings, but just reading the, the reports about for example, the Girl Scout property, that there, there's quite a bit of attention to design standards.
There is quite a bit.
And design, you know, uh the design that coheres with its surrounding architectural environment without replicating its surrounding architectural environment, and that's the kind of needle they're trying to thread.
Yeah.
It looks to me like they're doing it.
I, I think for sure, uh a shout out to them, uh but I will also say that's an easier challenge in context of the Bedford Motor. Uh where much of the road is essentially turn of the century. A harder question in places like the downtown where, you know, in some, it, it gets a, it's a funny, I was in Massachusetts this weekend and saw some of these old towns. Um some very vibrant kind of touristy, but some of them sort of struggling. Mill towns have fantastic building stock that I only wish we had, and yet, you know, that's not, that's not the horse we ride here, so.
Oh, great. Yeah, I mean, here too, and I was up in Troy, New York uh for one of these interminable high school softball tournaments I go to. There too, there's, I mean, beautiful eighteen, nineteen eighteen hundred. So basically, that is all in Brooklyn, right?
Yeah.
That are ready.
So, yeah. Economic vitality to, to, to really.
They're doing, they're trying, they're doing well.
Yeah. It's an interesting place.
Yeah.
At any rate, um Jonathan Cunningham's had a few comments that I've had an exchange with him and asked him a few questions. And he'll get back to me on that, which I'll ref- reflect back to all of us. We'll see what planning has to say. But I think it sounds like where we're coming to is the question of we're all pretty much in agreement, and I think that's likely true of Nicole and all over that appear to speak for themselves about uh the expiration of the moratorium, the investigation of the U sheds, the investigation of affordable housing. And really the question we confront now is whether we avail ourselves of some of these recommendations uh that are on the table on the last couple of pages of the V F J report.
If we um, so concerning four forty-four Bedford, since that's the only proposal that would, that has been affected.
Right, to our knowledge, that is the only multifamily residential on the boards at the moment in Pleasantville.
If we were, if we were to change the F A R bonus structure in a way that would negatively affect their proposal, are there ramifications for how that would be viewed?
I mean, certainly, I assume they would be unhappy about it. Sorry, we have a legal right to.
Legal ramifications, I should have been clear.
Yes, we do. We have the right to do it. Um uh clearly, anything we do that changes zoning, especially zoning that reduces somebody's property potential, needs to be underlaid with a, a, a clear decision-making process, but we have the right to make that decision. Have we set it up?
Yeah, I think.
Monday.
I've had a lot more.
The twenty-sixth.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we need everybody here for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll reflect back after Wednesday night, when I get back from uh my, my discussion with planning. And uh we will go from there.
Is that discussion with planning something that, that's not something we do often because of the separation of.
We do, we do. I, I, I have gone, I, I generally go when there's some matter before them where we're seeking their commentary.
Is it?
And in this case.
We've asked them what they think.
Well, and we, and and uh a zoning change, for example, would always involve their required. So um. But, you know, clearly stay away from engaging in their deliberations about a given project.
Of course.
All right. Anything to add to that?
So we'll carry it forward as a work session item?
Yes, please.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. With that, let's call it a day before it starts raining again.
I mean, that we go into executive session.
Oh, yes. We had a brief executive session. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Good evening, all. We're going to sign off and go into an executive session.